We're good to go, go ahead.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 23 River Falls City Council meeting. First thing we'll do is say the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, Kristi, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Beerstead.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Plunkett.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kristi. Can we have approval from the minutes of the March 9 meeting, please? Mr. Mayor, move approval minutes.
Second.
Questions or comments? Kristi, we have first and a second on the minutes.
A first by Morissette, a second by Odine. We'll start the vote with Alder Person, Plunkett.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the approval of the bills with Mr. Morissette.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I make a motion, we approve the bills in the amount of $575,248.55, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
Question or comments? Kristi, we have first and a second on the bills.
A first by Morissette, a second by Beerstead. We'll start the vote with Alder Person, Odine.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next, move on to public comments. John, I'm assuming there's nobody there?
That is correct. There isn't anyone here.
Okay, nobody holding?
Correct.
Okay. Next, we will move on to the State of the City presentation with City Administrator Scott Simpson.
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Plunkett, Councilmember Plunkett might have had a comment.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
It would be more appropriate later. Thanks.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Simpson.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm gonna pull up the presentation here. Just give it a moment to make sure everybody can see it. Should be loaded now.
Looks good.
All right, Mr. Smiths, are you able to? Yeah, that's good. Thank you for that. So, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to share this year's State of the City address. Because 2020 was a year like no other, this presentation will be a little different than the past. Before I begin, I do want to set some context for what hopefully you'll see is a fairly glowing and celebratory review of 2020. But there is some context that's important before we get started. I do want to recognize that 2020 was a year of loss for many. My heart goes out to those who lost friends and family, neighbors and coworkers. And I worry about people still struggling and those who find themselves still dealing with after-effects of COVID infections. I understand people have lost companionship, livelihoods, opportunities, and rights of passage. We've all lost some freedom of movement and some semblance of normalcy. No wonder if you could join me, before we get started, in a brief moment of silence, to remember those that we have lost to this pandemic. Thank you. Now, while 2020 was a year of loss, it was also a year of hope. I saw people come together. We took care of each other in ways both big and small. I saw the community reach out to the most vulnerable among us. I saw frontline workers in all segments risk their health to help the sick, teach our children, provide sustenance, and keep us safe. And I saw neighbors helping neighbors. We saw organizations and businesses stretch to their capacity, provide what we have long taken for granted. Now, you'll note on my opening slide that I don't have a title for this year's address. I take a lot of, have a little fun and pride in coming up with themes each year. As we reflected on this year and its overarching theme, I guess there was a number of things that came to mind, some that were suitable for work and others that were not. But my mind just kept coming back to our core values. And so, this year, we just focused on the presentation around the core values of the city and how we live those values facing the circumstances we had neither planned for nor anticipated. The values here at the City of River Falls is to put people first, embrace change, serve our community, pursue excellence, act with integrity, and we do that considering future generations. In 2020, we put people first, both our employees and our community members. If you recall, shortly after Governor Evers issued his stay-at-home order, we created working teams with a cross-section of employees serving on each. We took a, very much took a all-hands-on-deck approach to crisis management, with many employees working in new roles for much of the year. The operations team was tasked with COVID protection, procurement, protocols, and it ensured continuity of city services. The employee care team looked at how to support our employees in doing so. Our third team focused on near-daily communications using a variety of tools to keep employees and the public informed. This team built a community care hub and library's webpage to provide comprehensive lists of resources to help residents. I'm proud of how our employees came together regardless of department or position to solve the immediate issues of the day. I guess you never know how flexible you can be until you're put to the test. When it became clear the pandemic would stretch many months, we reorganized under an incident command system, and this allowed for more structure while giving leaders the agility to respond swiftly to COVID-related issues and conditions. Our initial response in those early days focused on five main areas that are outlined here. And we communicated that as we tried to make sense of all the national, state, county guidelines, orders, and other information coming our way, we created our Crushing COVID Plan to communicate to the public and our employees. In their safer-at-home phase last spring, the wheels of city kept turning. We transitioned many employees home, we modified operations, and we began offering virtual meetings. To get the work done in these extraordinary times, we needed to be fully committed to our second value, embracing change. Now, luckily, because of the foresight and good planning and early investments in technology by the city council, we were well-positioned to quickly embrace some of the challenges that lay out before us. IT staff had been working over the past couple of years to install cloud-based software and train employees, readying us to connect quickly and easily during the transition to remote work. Staff had also just about completed migrating to a cloud-based phone system, which allowed us to be reached from all locations. And of course, where would we have been without our remote-meeting technology? Staff helped bridge the digital divide by making us all comfortable muting and unmuting, sharing, chatting on Teams and WebEx. As a result, we didn't miss a single council meeting. Since last March and counting, we've hosted 70 meetings, official city meetings via WebEx, with steady improvements for better viewing and participation. I think one of the biggest takeaways from this year is that remote meetings have a place, and I'm sure they will be part of our work environment for the foreseeable future. The 2020 presidential election was historic in many ways. Now, after five elections in 10 months, we thought we had lots of practice. Our team was well-trained. We had our new electronic software Badger Books in place and working well. We had a whole list of volunteers, more than we had had in many years for the election. Nothing, however, fully prepared us for the enormous complexities presented by the November election, combined with COVID. Just the sheer volume of absentee ballots sent and counted was monumental, 66% of eligible voters. And of course, the need to take meticulous measures to keep our poll workers and voters safe on Election Day while protecting the integrity of the elections. Now, even with COVID-related limitations, staff was able to open the Glen Park Splash Pad, organize 400 swim lessons, welcome youth to summer camps, managed an over-full campground, and handle over 500 reservations in just two city parks. Closing the library had a huge impact on our community, and it turned their usual business model for service on its head. But library staff adapted, and their programs thrived. Staff introduced a popular curbside pickup program in April and over the next eight months scheduled more than 12,000 pickups. Staff also made it easy to access services that kept our community members engaged and connected by providing free Wi-Fi service in the parking lot, offering new hotspots for checkout, and making computers, printers available outside the main doors. Now, even though patrons missed coming to library programs, adult program attendance actually increased 74% as live events were recorded and available for viewing at any time. And of course, Storytime with Monica was still a hit, even on Facebook Live, drawing an average of 100 young viewers and their families per show. Now, all of this was accomplished at the same time the library was installing an automated material handling system to allow staff to focus in the future more on helping patrons rather than checking in and physically sorting over 300,000 material items each year. Now, while we were constantly changing and adapting so we could keep our staff and community members safe, we continued to serve our community with excellence, two more of our values. This can only happen when people are 100% committed, even during a crisis. It can only happen when we all pitch in and perform the tasks in front of us, whether they be defined as ours or not. The core services you depend on continued in 2020. Our electricity came on. Our toilets flushed. Fresh water continued to come from the tap each day. Our streets were plowed. Keeping those systems running can be challenging in the best of times. The fact that they were uninterrupted in the worst of times is a testament to our city's preparedness and resiliency. Another measure that had started before the pandemic and needed to be completed during the pandemic was the transition of the River Falls EMS to Alina EMS in November. Now, this planned service transition came after a multi-year process to evaluate the feasibility of the city continuing to provide ambulance services. I can say I'm pleased with the final contract and our past, current, and future relationship with Alina. While continuing to provide excellent services and implement COVID-19 mitigations, we summoned the wherewithal to keep pushing forward because there were projects to complete and because we knew there would be an after. And we needed to be prepared. While many cities in our state, understandably across the nation, chose to wait and see, to hunker down, and to focus only on core services, we moved forward and facilitated yet another great year of development and infrastructure projects. And in doing so, we demonstrated our value of considering future generations. 2020 was a great year for development progress. In March 2021, we saw the completion, by March 2021, we saw the completion of the Jug Handle, M Health Fairview Clinic, and the Police Station. On the housing side, we celebrated the completion of the Depot and City Station. Peregrine Terrace and Milltown Residence Construction continues. And you can see, in our housing progress from 19 to 20, we did see an uptick in units even during the pandemic. Now, 2019, if you remember, was quite the banner year ahead of 18 and so on, and is repeated for the last few years. Now, I'm happy to be moving solidly toward the goals outlined in the 2018 Housing Study of increasing both the amount and the type of housing in River Falls. And those of you looking to review that study again can find it on the city's website, hashtag Housing Study. Our Community Development Department introduced a story map that features building remodeling sites in and around River Falls, and that's in addition to the original story map feature that we had that showed active projects. We expect this new story map to be an opportunity for new and old residents of the community to be more informed on future development areas and be engaged in the development of those areas and express an interest of participating when those are considered. Now, these are sites that owners have expressed an interest in new development or the staff understands from future planning that there's development in the works. Three significant infrastructure projects, I think, are important to highlight in this year's address, including the Jug Handle at the intersection of Highways 3565 and Division Street. And this aerial photo shows, I think, clearly the purpose of this partnership with the Wisconsin DOT, to eliminate cross-traffic movements and reduce the risk of crashes. During this construction, some folks had a difficulty understanding in, from a 2D map, exactly what the 3D project was gonna look like. I think even some of us who are veterans at looking at 2D maps and trying to understand what a 3D project is gonna look like, still found a few areas of this project that were surprising to us when it was completed. But it's well-earned congratulations to all those who designed and implement this project and to those who constructed it. If you thought there was a lot of trucks coming and going each day, you're correct, about 200 per day, 2,700 total, hauling about 40,000 cubic yards of fill to that site. So, a project that we've been waiting for for some time, and we're glad to get completed. Second project completed in early 2021 was the new police station. Now, we had decided on a new construction as part of our 2019-2023 CIP Capital Improvement Plan. We did make a major pivot, and we purchased the former Rivertowns building in Whitetail Corporate Park. Instead of spending an estimated $7.5 million on a 20,000-square-foot new building, we invested $3 million in addition to the $1.5 million acquisition cost for $4.5 million in an extensive remodel and expansion. Now, we were able to move into a new 27,000-square-foot location three years ahead of schedule, which is 30% larger and 40% less expensive than we budgeted for only three years ago. Really proud of this project and the folks involved with it. Again, good teamwork and a good partnership for the future. Another project that many people don't, aren't even probably aware of the facility, given its location, but was the 2020 project with the South Fork Substation. $1.2 million investment in our electric infrastructure, a new underground circuit that connects to UWRF. This will increase safety, reliability, and system redundancy for our largest electric customer. And in addition to the university, this substation typically serves about 1/3 of our residential customers. Now, also provides redundancy for other customers not currently regularly served by this substation should we need to switch customers to a different substation. Careful and prudent planning allowed us to receive shipment of a new fire truck, Engine 20, in late January 2020. The new engine is a replacement for a 32-year-old engine number seven. In addition to those projects mentioned, water and wastewater staff coordinated front-end screening on the main sewer pipe coming into the wastewater plant, update electrical panels and install the new aeration system, which is shown in the pictures, in the oxidation ditch. This will improve reliability, lower our energy costs, and increase the capacity of the existing physical structures of the wastewater plant. This project was a nearly $2 million investment to assure we can get the most out of our existing plant. We had a little rain in June. I think it's important to note that this is another example of considering future generations. This community has spent decades investing in stormwater management, well ahead of the curve for other communities in our state and, in fact, in the nation. And during the June flood, I think it was not evident, which is what we're going for. We have about 122 ponds and over 2,500 structures and 50 miles of pipe in our system, and it performed very well. Basically, one of the worst floods in 60 years, and on top of the stormwater management efforts of improving the quality of water flowing through the system, it does have a flood control impact. And certainly, had we not invested in those 122 ponds and 2,500 structures, we would have seen a lot more flooding of homes in River Falls. Another impact of the flood was giving us an opportunity to make some more lemons, or make some more lemonade with our lemons. There was some small damage done to the dam, the lower dam. We had just been wrapping up completion of a number of studies. We've now completed the final attend studies required by state and federal agencies. The June flood came crashing through, causing some damage to the Powell Falls. As a result, we had to drain the Lake Louise and inspect the structure. Once we did, we identified some damage that we feel would be more expensive to invest in than the electricity that could be generated over the next couple of years that we have remaining on the license. As a result, we're gonna vote later tonight on a resolution to maintain the drawdown of the lake while continuing with the Powell Falls Dam removal. Picture here, I believe, is provided by the KCC of kind of what the current state of that area is, although I'd say it's probably not the current state because I don't, I doubt there's too much snow. See a little bit of snow left on this picture, but the river is starting to take some shape. One of the final values identified in the address tonight is act with integrity. And that took an added importance, I think, this year when people were looking for trusted information sources. Integrity includes both that transparency in our actions, but also considering the impacts on our taxpayers and ratepayers. How is it gonna feel and when we implement things? Now, while we were certainly busy in 2020, we also pared back on some operations and put some projects on the back burner because we thought we should match some of the conditions that were challenging our business community and some of the homeowners in the community. So, we took a hard look at our strategic plan. We made some decisions to delay or eliminate items, some of which we thought we needed some more in public engagement than we'd be able to get during a pandemic year, others that we just thought were things that could be delayed, either the impact on rate or taxpayers, or could be prioritized for future years when things were a little bit better. We did eliminate those items. We instituted a hiring freeze, and we pared back our expenses significantly. This resulted in us spending about 10% less than our budget or savings of $1 million despite making progress on key projects and continuing more services. Additionally, we did determine to delay an approved rate increase that the State of Wisconsin Public Service Commission had approved. We thought that was, would not be timely implemented during the summer cooling season when people might have their highest cooling bills or electricity bills. And so, that was delayed a number of months, allowing us to avoid that rate increase right in the, kind of the heat of the summer. Before we get to the look-ahead part of my address, I do want to say something more about integrity. In 2020, we all had to step up. More importantly, we had to work together as trusted partners, and we had to work quickly and successfully. And so, the integrity in our relationships and the trust we had to put in people was critically important, maybe more than ever. So, I want to take a moment to highlight a few of those partners. Our most important partners in 2020 likely were the county health officials. We met weekly with the directors of both offices. We had candid conversations throughout the many months we were working together. We helped each other navigate through the year. We shared information. We challenged each other. We counted on Pierce County, AZ Snyder, to help guide some of our decision-making when it came to virus mitigation efforts and safety protocols for both our employees and some of the impacts to the community. Now, their partnership and support helped our community survive this crisis. Their honesty and their transparency were very much important to our relationship with them, and I appreciate it. Early in the pandemic, we worked closely with the Chamber of Commerce, helping them find resources for small businesses to include on their very comprehensive website. They stepped up right away and said, "We can host this part of our community's information sourcing and recovery." We partnered with them on instituting a 30-minute parking restriction in Main Street to assist patients, patrons reaching out to local business for curbside service. And later, the Chamber helped us host several listening sessions for myself and staff, the mayor, and others to hear from business concerns directly. Supporting the local business community and the economy became one of our strategic initiatives for 2020 in the Crushing COVID Plan. We monitored the economic health of the community through business engagement and metrics. It was a major priority. We reached out to over 200 local businesses twice in 2020 as a check-in to both provide and receive information. City also worked to establish a Recovery Revolving Loan Fund, which provided additional funding and support for small businesses. That was 10 loans for $95,000. Council also approved a lodging, essentially a lodging tax grant for the hurting lodging industry in town. UWRF has always been a trusted partner of ours, or at least as long as I've been here, and I believe for many decades before that. But even more so in 2020, given their huge impact, community testing program, and the impact of students coming in and out of the community, we were able to continue that partnership by hosting the testing site at Hoffman Park Storm Shelter in February. It seems clear to me that they had a real impact in our mitigation efforts across the community, like some of the decisions they made. I understand that some of those decisions were not always popular with either the students or the community, but I think they can be, they were counted on and can be counted on throughout to have open conversation with us and talk about how we can face things together. I was able to meet regularly with the chancellor and other university leaders to keep each other informed and try to work on strategies together. And I appreciate that. So, what comes next? As we continue to see more light at the end of the tunnel, we're focusing our attention on recovery. Now, that includes continuing to share information from our partners about vaccination and testing, which I think is gonna be here for some time still. We'll be working closely with our state representatives and other partners to figure out the stimulus packages, both the city's expected package, but also other funds attached to the bills that are coming into the community through other sources and to other organizations and businesses so that we can understand how best to assist or in some cases, how best to stay out of the way. Now, we'll continue to update our recovery plan as we move through the summer. We'll be working with public health and with the Chamber and other local groups to plan safe activities and events. That seems to be one of the biggest topics on the agenda at this point is what is summer gonna look like? What are events gonna look like? And how are we gonna safely do those? Now, we'll also keep an eye on returning to a more normal library and summer recreation program schedule. I think we're a little ahead on the summer recreation compared to the library at this point, but I'm optimistic that working with public health and our operation departments that will have a good opportunity to have a more normal library and summer recreation system this year. Finally, we're gonna continue to support the continued physical development of the community. We're gonna encourage and support residential, commercial, and industrial projects that forward the livability of our city. We look forward to that, getting back to normalcy, and that means looking ahead. Industrial and commercial development will continue in major ways in 2021. We have a lot of interest and... We have a lot of interest and a lot of submittals coming already for projects in 21 and 22. The pipeline of projects continues, and you're going to see that on the council and the community continuing. This includes projects in Sterling Ponds Corporate Parks and a major renovation at the Shopko site, which you can see here and we'll hear more about later this evening. We continue initial engineering design of Man Valley. We've had a lot of interest, including now from national real estate interests for large projects in the Man Valley area. And we've got quite a bit of work to do to get ourselves ready to appropriately cite those and be prepared to address those as they go forward. We're also going to see construction of multifamily units in Hyvee Meadows and in Sterling Ponds this year. And those are just some of the things we know about already. There's also going to be significant road construction work starting this year. Highway 29 from Prescott Cemetery Road, including reworking somewhat the intersection of County Highway FF. And then Cemetery Road from South Main to Highway 65. In addition, the city is working hard with the state on deck rehabilitation for Powell Avenue Bridge, which may or may not be able to be done in 2021. We were also concerned about our ability to have quality public engagement on the comprehensive plan. And so that was one of the projects that was slid to later in 2021. We expect in the fall of 2021 to outline the process going forward for updating the 2005 comprehensive plan. Now, this guides our growth by analyzing resources and trends. Looks at housing, the economy, transportation, land use, utilities, parks, schools, natural resources, and more. At times, as times change, priorities shift. There's also new challenges, new themes and new things that require our attention that may not have been included or received our attention in 2005. Those include, but are now limited to climate, equity, community health, and resiliency. Now, like it was for the Kenny Corridor Project, public engagement will be a major part of this plan's development. We want to ensure that everyone has a voice envisioning the future of our city. On a smaller scale, the mayor would like to continue community engagement in his summer cookout conversation series. We also will be conducting our fifth biennial citizen survey. This is a statistically significant random sampled survey of residents that helps us understand and improve service delivery set priorities and create some performance benchmarks. If all goes well, we may even be back to grilling hot dogs at our cookout conversations. Now, as part of our engagement planning, we're also looking at new ways to communicate with the public. In 2020, we introduced electronic newsletter called the E Source. We're also working on something called Just Five Things, which would be a weekly quick hits for the public. We hope that'll give residents more information in a timely, timely fashion and something that they can digest and look into more if they're interested in looking at the issues more deeply. So, 2020. I guess I just wanted to do some thanks. I think, thank you again, Mayor and Council for giving me the time tonight during a very full meeting. I wanted to share some of this past year's highlights and accomplishments. It was certainly a year like no other, but I believe we weathered it well. I'm confident that we could not have accomplished it without the leadership and support of the city council. The time and attention you've given this community over the past year has not gone unnoticed by me and others, and it will be part of the legacy that you leave the city. I also want to thank city staff for providing the very best service to our community during a tough and unpredictable year. I didn't see their commitment waiver. Their ability to find solutions to new daily challenges never ceases to amaze me. And I want to assure you that with this team of compassionate, determined professionals, we're all in very good hands. Finally, I want to thank the community. I want to thank the community for taking care of each other during the pandemic, for following the guidelines, for helping neighbors, for being patient, for adapting, and doing whatever needed to be done. The community is the reason I'm proud to live and serve here in River Falls. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions that you might have thought of. And I'm going to unshare my screen so that you can do that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. That was a great presentation. Okay. Anybody have anything? Questions? Comments? Hope he's got anything. Okay. You did that great of a job, Scott.
Thanks. Well, they're all muted, so they can, I couldn't hear if they were saying bad things anyways. Now you get to get on to the agenda. Thank you.
It's just nothing but all great stuff. Okay. So let's go on to the consent agenda. First thing is acknowledgement of the following minutes. The bid board from 29, the River Falls Housing Authority from 210, the Plan Commission from 22, the Park and Rec Advisory Board from 217, the Library Board from 21, and West Central Wisconsin Biosolids Facility Commission from 121. Next is a resolution endorsing new economic development electric rate for qualified commercial customers. This resolution would authorize the River Falls City Municipal Utilities to seek approval from the Wisconsin Public Service Commission for the approval of an economic development rate or new load market pricing. Next one is a resolution awarding for 2021 through 2023 directional boring contract. This contract would go to the Kramer Service Group. Next one is a resolution recommending engineering firms for South Wason Lane Reconstruction and Cascade Avenue Intersection Improvements. This resolution would recommend the top three consulting engineering proposals for the South Wason Construction and Cascade Avenue Intersection Improvements. And we would send those to Wisconsin Department of Transportation for contract negotiations. Does anybody want to poll anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Consent Agenda item number four.
Anybody else? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move we I move we approve Consent Agenda items 3A through F, 5 and 6.
Questions or comments on any of it? Kristy, we have a first and a second for Consent Agenda items. Where are we? 3A through F and 5 and 6?
I have a first from Alderperson O'Dean, second by Morrisette. We'll start the vote with Mr. Downey.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Piercehead.
Aye.
Morrisette.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
O'Dean.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Downing, you pulled number four.
Thanks, Mayor. Number four is a resolution endorsing new economic development electric rate for qualified commercial customers. And I've got a couple of questions for our city administrator, Scott Simpson tonight. I'm in favor of this and I see the advantage of it. But I think it'd be good to bring some clarity to the public who's watching and how we're spending their money and how it works for them. So my questions, if you could elaborate for us, Mr. Simpson, are if they accomplish this, it's going to lock in prices. And essentially, who qualifies for this? And is there any energy benefits? And how is it going to benefit the average person? Are my two questions?
I'll try to give you a 30,000-foot summary of the memo. So that only the largest of customers would benefit from this. The example was given at the utility advisory board that this would be likely for large industrial expansions, potentially for institutional expansions. So potentially something like the new science and technology building at UWRF may qualify. There may be enough electric load there to qualify. But it's likely going to be larger industrial customers, the 400 KV kilowatt or larger. For example, Best Made Cookies latest expansion wasn't large enough to qualify for this tariff. So it'd be a pretty large economic development project. The primary reason to do something like this is for competitive reasons, to provide a small incentive and frankly, a temporary incentive for a large facility, a large electric user to locate in your community when they're considering a number of other communities to do so. Because the rate tariff allows you to provide essentially market rate pricing on, and I'm oversimplifying, but essentially market rate pricing. There isn't a particular demonstrated negative impact to the existing customers because essentially but for that customer coming in, similar to like a TID test or something, they're buying electricity. We're not making a significant profit on electricity that would be kind of spread across the community for those first few years of the tariff. But they're not necessarily paying any more than they would have. And frankly, they're spreading some of the administrative, you know, some of the overhead of our operations of the overall electric to that new bigger customer, which if they were this large of a customer, they would be in single-digit percentages of our whole electric load. So it'd be pretty significant.
So, excuse me for interrupting you, but what it essentially does is it attracts some of these bigger groups into the city, and by doing so in the short term, it locks in that price. So there's a convenience for the average consumer, is correct?
Well, yeah, I want to be careful about over speaking incorrectly, but actually, Councilmember Downing, they're not locking in a price. They're kind of riding the market. So they're able to, our regular pricing on electric is set to be conservative and pretty smooth. So as the market goes up and down a bit, our customers don't see as much of that volatility. But they also don't get the advantage of the lower, you know, market rates that may become available. So on a large customer like this, it's actually not locking in necessarily. It's getting, taking advantage of some of the lower prices that might be available in the market for them. The drawback or the main con, I guess, to doing this kind of thing is if you take the approach that the rate should be the rate. You know, we set rates and everybody should just pay the rate. And if you want to be part of the River Falls Municipal Utilities or you want to be part of our community, you just come in and pay the posted rate. And so it's not a good analogy, but it's analogy that's maybe top of mind for some people is these AT&amp;T commercials where they're saying the new customer gets this rate and the old customer gets this rate. Whereas in the past, the new customers seem to always get this better deal. And so this is a little bit better deal for a new customer. But it's short-term. It's part of our regulated rate structure, so it's not an unregulated rate. And the thought here is that you can attract the larger customers of electricity. And then after they've made the investment in the plant equipment and other things, they're not likely to just close up shop and leave. And so therefore, the long-term, all customers, in particular, smaller electric customers are going to benefit from that larger electric customer coming in and helping us with the demand and the load and overall keep those prices lower. So that's a vote of no on this would likely be because you have a kind of a policy objection over giving a break to a new customer in order to lure them in. But it shouldn't have an impact the way the rates set up, the way I understand the rate through the PSC is. And that's why the Public Service Commission is involved, is they don't want any impact on existing customers.
So, Mr. Simpson, in your opinion, would this create stability for the average customer as well then?
It doesn't take away their stability. It has the opportunity in the long run to create better stability, especially if frankly, we can get electric customers that are using electricity at night. Now, if you can get industrial customers that have more load at night, that's going to help all of us. You know, that doesn't mean, and there is nothing in the works right now. So we're bringing this up because we've started to see more prospects that may qualify for this. But we are not negotiating any deal with any company right now that would directly benefit from this that I'm aware of. This is something we're trying to do proactively to get ourselves prepared for larger customers in the future.
I would agree. Well, thank you, Mr. Simpson. I appreciate your insight.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just give a little bit of insight. At the UAB meeting, the conversation took place. And maybe Scott or Kevin, if he's on, can make sure I stay inside my guide rails here. There is a potential for these clients to have a downside. If we saw rates, as we just saw them in the electrical market spike, they're going to pay a higher rate. They're going to pay the market rate. So there is a downside to those, to those market rates. In the residential side or the non, the people who would not be in this category. There's a PCAC, it's a price adjustment that we kind of use to even things out a little bit. And I can't do justice talking about it. Kevin could, but the other thing that we kind of talked about a little bit was this is another economic development tool. Right now, we're relying quite heavily on TID, as we're seeing. This is another one of those economic development tools that I think it's important that the staff have access to. So that was a little bit of the discussion at the UAB, just to give some further insight. I don't know if that's helpful, Mr. Downing or not.
I would say that's helpful. It kind of confirms what I was looking at when I read that, too. I can see the benefits from a couple of different ways of getting, attracting groups to join the city. And there is a benefit, I believe, to the average consumer, too, when that happens that I'm seeing here. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion on this.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second. Any other questions or comments on this? Mr. Plunkett?
Mayor, when we're looking at billing on this, is the billing that the utility is doing is that from the generation facility or from the power delivery to our system network here? And who is paying for the power loss and transmission that occurs there? I just don't know how that's accounted for. Thank you.
I think the short, yeah, I think the short answer, I don't know if Kevin can give a better one than me, maybe not, but they're going to calculate this, kind of looking at that MISO system operator thing. And so it's going to be kind of a net. So that essentially how it's delivered to them is what the price is going to be. And as Mr. Morrisette pointed out, there's some, they're taking some market volatility on their. But the rate is probably beyond my ability to explain it simply. But essentially, my understanding is they've kind of got all these, we are a regulated utility, so this is not like deregulating electric use. But they're taking that MISO rate, which is the Midwest system operator. You know, obviously electrons don't know where they're coming from or going to. So, you know, there's stuff coming in and out of the system and then they're tracking that. So from an actual standpoint, some of those electrons might be coming from the hydro here in River Falls and going to that customer. But they're going to look at kind of what's added into the system and bill it through. That's my understanding. I don't know, Kevin, do you want to, Kevin Westhouse, did you want to? I don't know if an expansion that would be helpful or not.
I think Councilmember Plunkett kind of hit on them. I mean, that price will be dependent upon location and losses and daily market prices. So there's a formula for that. And Scott Morris had hit on it a little bit. It is a little risky. I mean, there's been points in time when that new load market pricing would have been more attractive, but not in February, they would have been paying more. So it's a risk reward. And then also, I just want to clarify one big piece of this. This isn't for their whole load. It's only a portion of their energy usage. So this is only for the top, I think, 30 or 35% of their usage. And then the bottom 60 to 65% is the rate. So this NLP, New Load Market Price is only for the top 30 or 35% of their usage as well. But then you hit on it. There's a whole bunch of factors and there is daily hourly pricing. And there's people that are monitoring that to come up with the market price of energy based on all those things that you had mentioned.
Kevin?
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Yep. Go ahead, Hal.
Um, for Mr. Westhouse, do you, um, could, or will, will there be a, a negative impact to the bottom line of the utility? Let's say over a, a 10-year period here, if we get three or four of these coming in over the next five years and for the next, you know, 12 years, they're not paying, they're paying, um, uh, wholesale rates, uh, for that top 35% or what are we giving up in terms of, uh, uh, income to the utility? And is that? What's the impact of that on the utility's bottom line and or, you know, uh, future?
Bottom line. Council, council member Watson, this question was also asked at the utility advisory board. Tim Ament, the rates analyst at WPPI answered this question, and I'll just repeat what he said since he is the expert, but he said this is revenue neutral to the utility because it's a purely pass through cost. They're paying for the actual cost of energy. I mean, I suppose one could argue you miss out on a little bit of that revenue margin, but the, the cost is purely, they are paying for exactly for what they're getting. So it, um, the only thing you would be missing on that top 30% is your margin for that four years that they, uh, elected to use this rate. And again, too, I want to just maybe make the point that this rate is 100% purely voluntary. So we would offer it out of the toolbox and then they would take it to their, uh, corporate headquarters and decide if this was something that they wanted to use or not. Um, but also just reiterate, this is purely for competitive advantage for the city of River Falls. Other utilities are offering similar things or, uh, in the, in the, in a co-ops or more unregulated, they can even be more aggressive. But it kind of gets us in the game of some of these large customers. So Hal, that was a long answer to say, Tim Ament said this is a revenue neutral to this, to the city of River Falls utilities.
And just to follow up, are there, you know, when a customer like this comes in and they have needs, um, I would assume that, that, um, part of that margin you're talking about is going towards, um, helping pay for some of the infrastructure in and around a big project that may come online. Um, you don't see that as an issue here? Again, just, just want to get confirmation.
Right. From my understanding, that's not an issue because the long-term benefits will outweigh that short-term, um, sacrifice. And not only what it does for the utility, but what it could do for the community, jobs, tax base, a lot of those other things that, that, uh, bringing in these types of businesses in a town with you for a community. I mean, that's a whole topical thing too, but no, we don't feel a concern about that. Uh, now this one other thing, 29 other communities in the WPPI, um, group out of the 51, 29 of the 51 have already adopted this. And we're going to be in a group of 15 more that are going here, uh, in the middle of next month to try to get this into their toolbox, to use that phrase again.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Kristi, have a first and a second on, uh, resolution number four, agenda item?
I have a first by Downing, a second by Beerstead. We'll start the vote with Mr. Morissette.
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Plunkett?
Aye.
Gagne?
Aye.
Odine?
Aye.
Beerstead?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is a resolution approving the 2020 budget adjustments. And I'll take a motion on that. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the 2020 budget adjustments.
Second.
Okay. Have a first and a second. Questions or comments? Kristi, have a first and a second on the resolution, uh, ordinance number seven for the budget adjustments?
First by Morissette, a second by Odine. We'll start the vote with Mr. Watson.
Aye.
Plunkett?
Aye.
Beerstead?
Aye.
Morissette?
Aye.
Gagne?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Odine?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, next is a resolution adopting, uh, article, I, action items, timing and financial scope for phase one of River Falls, of Powell Falls, uh, dam, decommissioning and FERC license amendment. I'll take a, I'll take a motion on this and then our utility director, Mr. Whitehouse or Mr. Westhouse will, uh, give us a little presentation and then we can ask questions after that. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the resolution affirming path for continued progress on hydro electric project for Powell Falls and Junction Falls facilities.
Second.
Okay. Kevin, if you want to give us our presentation? Or your, your little, yeah, our little presentation?
Yes, I need to, uh, so there we go. Now my share button is open, so I'm going to share my screen. See, um, John is on my other screen. Can I just drag it over there? Or not, John? What should I do? So can you see it now?
Yep. Well, we see, we see it now, but we're seeing it.
All right. And I, yep. And I will go to the slide view presentation. So.
Perfect. Yeah.
And then I'm going to do this. I got one more, I'm one click away. And there we go. All right. Well, good, good evening, uh, mayor and council. Um, I'm Kevin Westhouse, your utility director. And I just want to say that, uh, you know, this presentation is going to be kind of like a trip to the gym. You don't really want to go, but you'd be glad you went after it's done, hopefully. So, um, you know, this, you got to listen to Kevin drone on. You know, as, and as a responsible teacher, I want to make sure that you're all going to get a 90% or above on the test that follows. So, uh, so hopefully we'll make this somewhat interesting and educational. Also, I want to let you know Leslie Brodkowski from TRC and Peter Haug are also here tonight. If you have questions when we're done. So let's just get right into this hydroelectric relicensing. Let's go. So we're on this five-year relicensing and decommissioning adventure. So I'm, I don't use that word adventure lightly. It's adventure because we are starting to advance into areas, even FERC said are new roads for them. So this is a bit of adventure. Tonight, we're going to talk about where we've been and what has been spent. That's what everybody wants to know, where we're at, and then where, where we are going. So if you think back to 2018, RFMU declared its intent to apply for relicensing of the Junction Falls development and proposed a decommissioning of the Powell Falls development in a submission to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission on August 30th of 2018. This followed the city council's resolution and direction in February of 2018. That resolution said within this project, we're going to relicensure Junction Falls. And we're going to decommission and eventually remove Powell Falls. So that's what that whole license said, and that's what, that's what we're moving ahead with. Again, relicensure Junction within that license, we're going to decommission Powell Falls. Let's break the spending down. Let's get right into the spending. This will keep, get your attention right out of the chute. We're going to break our spending down into four areas. One, we had the FERC submittal and pre-studies work with TRC. And we had the studies and costs associated with these studies. Then we had the application for license. We didn't have it. That's what we're going for right now. The draft and the final and support work, that's the big one. That's, that's submitting the license. And then we got, I guess, the real big one would be number four, the decommissioning and removal of the structure and the work in Lake Louise. Grand total of about two, uh, million and, oh, two and three quarter million dollars. So almost 2,795,000. So that's the spending. Um, we spent some and there's more to come. That's the spending. Let's look at it. One, the FERC submittal and pre-studies work to TRC $165,000. That was again, our initial application work in our initial application phase with FERC, uh, was part of the year two relicensing. And it helped us with the planning assistance from the states, the PAS, with the U S Army Corps of Engineering program application. So that's what that 165 was for. And then we got into the study season. Initially, I think we had 10 or 11 studies that we recommended to FERC. They came back and said, nope, you have to do 13 studies. Um, they're written, they're in your packet. All 13 of those are on table five on page 11. And that we thought that cost us just under $500,000. The Army Corps of Engineers helped out a little more than we thought they were going to be able to help out. Um, they were in for about $175,000 worth of study help. They also had about $40,000, uh, that they used for admin work within the Army Corps. So their total contribution really was $210,000, about 175,000 went towards the studies. In the beginning too, the KCC said they had split some of the decommissioning plan with us for $60,000. So just under 260,000 coming out of the electric fund for mandated studies. That was a big deal. Took about a year and a half, two years to get through that. Study season's done. We're moving on to now the application for the license, the draft and the final. We're going to be submitting the first draft in April of this year. There'll be a comment period for less comments, the less we're going to spend in the final submittal. So, um, just a heads up on that. And then we got post-application support from TRC. Again, this is all dependent on, um, you know, the comments, what FERC may or may not want us to do. So this is another couple hundred thousand dollars just to submit the application for relicensing. Again, what is the relicensing? It'll be on the test. Junction Falls keeps producing electricity. Powell Falls is going to be decommissioned and eventually removed. Last thing will be decommissioning and dam removal. So we thought we were going to be doing this after 2023. Um, some of this activity now because of the flood may be moved up. We're going to get into that in just a minute. That is just over $2 million. So we've got the FERC non-capacity license amendment, which I'm going to talk about in a minute. The 2021 construction permit applications, what might happen this year. A decommissioning, construction and removal of the Powell Falls facility. This is all what, this is all that is in there. And I'm going to get into some of those first three bullets in a little bit. Some activity that might even start happening this year. In the beginning too, we had, we have these hydros producing electricity. And one of the theories was that the production of these hydro facilities may be able to pay for much of this relicensing process. The theory is holding up pretty good. Actually, if you look, these are the productions from both, uh, Junction Falls and Powell Falls for 18, 19 and 20, the first three years of the relicensing for a grand total of about $381,000. Of course, Powell Falls hasn't been producing since the flood. Um, that's the bad news. The good news is Junction Falls does produce two thirds of our electricity. So two thirds of about 130, I'm going to round down just to be conservative. Let's say Junction Falls produces 80,000 a year for three more years. That's another $240,000. One could argue it's going to be just over $600,000 in avoided costs produced by our, uh, hydro facilities during the relicensing process. So where are we at? So that's where we were. So where are we at? Well, we're at the third from the bottom, the licensee, the final draft license application. That'll be happening here in April. We're kind of getting down to it now. We're going to get all this submitted here in 21. Then we're going to wait for reaction for FERC, from FERC. And, uh, we should get our license to operate the Junction Falls again in 23. Boy, everything was going smooth, right? We were, you know, cruising through this process. We're going to start decommissioning after the license. And then we had this flood happen. I think you saw this picture in Scott's presentation tonight too. The big flood of June 22. That was a doozy. Flood happened and, uh, we looked down there at Powell Falls and went, holy buckets. We got some damage on the dam. So we saw some chipping on one of the wing walls. Um, you know, some other things that kind of looks a little bit strange. We said probably need to take a look at that. And then FERC said, yeah, you need to take a look at that. And we need an inspection report on that dam. In order to get the inspection report, we had to draw down Lake Louise. So there's Lake Louise last October, just after the drawdown. That took us about, I don't know, 10 to 15 days to draw down the lake. And you could see there in October, the river was already cutting into the sediment area. There's a picture of that wing wall. You've seen that picture before. It's a little damage on the far side. FERC said this stuff's going to be, need to be repaired. There's another thing. There's our, our sleuth gate. It's got some dents in it from debris hitting it. That's going to need to be repaired. Have a few other minor cracks in the dam. Um, Peter Haug for mayor said we got probably a hundred thousand dollars worth of repair to that dam. If you want to get it totally functional again. So we assessed all of that. There, oh, we had trash on the trash rack. I understand from Wayne Cyberling that his guys were looking at that yesterday and may have started removing some of that. That is not an easy thing. That's rope and tackle and it's piece by piece. But, uh, we got to clean out that trash rack to allow water to flow through there again. Um, sediment, as I didn't mention sediment, I mean, there's some talk about sediment, how much sediment, where did the sediment go? So I'm just going to give you some context here. And this is also helping us in our decision to refill or not refill. There's about 200,000 cubic yards of sediment in that lake bed. You know, that flood happened and we lost about 16,500 cubic yards in the flood. It just happened naturally down the river. It was, it was pea soup. We saw it. Um, during the drawdown, we think we lost about 8,000 cubic yards during the drawdown and about 1,500 cubic yards over the winter. So, you know, a little more than half, um, of what we lost in the natural occurring event. So that's just for context. So we have all this information, right? So we had a study, we had a study session with, uh, yourselves and the utility advisory board. Was that a month and a half ago now? I don't know. Time flies, something like that. And, uh, we talked about options from option one to repair the dam, fill the lake back up, produce electricity until 2023. To option five of let's keep the drawdown and proceed with dam removal as fast as we can. So there was, there was the kind of the continuum. Option three is kind of in the middle. We said, let's keep the lake drawn down, drawn down. Let's, but let's do some minor repairs. Let's fix that gate so it opens more easily. Let's pull the turbine so we can allow water to flow, uh, more water to flow. So we don't get continually get the bounce in that lake and then the bounce back down where we would lose more sediment. We need more opening space than the six by six opening we have right now to allow more water to flow. So that lake doesn't continually bounce up and down. We did find out here two weeks ago in the one inch rainstorm and the melt off that we can handle one inch rain over about 12 to 15 hours because the lake did not bounce in that one inch rainstorm. And because of the slow melt this spring, we didn't get a bounce from the runoff. So, so far we've been pretty fortunate. So again, option three, we talked about that in our study session, kind of the middle of the road. Don't refill the lake. Do some minor repairs. Make sure, um, that that water can flow without the lake bouncing. And, um, maybe start easing into this decommissioning that we know we're going to be doing in the future, but move it up here a couple of years and, and kind of get going with this. So what are we doing? We're kind of shifting from relicensing to, to decommissioning or at least running parallel tracks. So that stock picture I have in here, I, I know the utility advisory board alerted me and they're like, that's not happening right now, is it? No, that's a stock picture, but I can tell you, it kind of looks like what would happen if you were to start removing some sediment below Powell Falls. It's that type of machinery. So that's why I put the picture in there. And again, for those watching at home, that's not happening now. That's a stock picture. So if we're to move ahead in this transition, like we just talked about, and this is partly what's in the resolution tonight, we would ask you to allow, uh, TRC to submit an amendment with FERC to remove Powell Falls from our original license. If we remove Powell Falls from our original license with FERC, it would then, um, put the jurisdiction authority over to the Wisconsin DNR. And then we would be able to do a few things here more locally with that dam regarding how it comes out, sediment management and things like that. So we're very interested in that. I mean, a lot of our stakeholder groups are very interested in that. We really think that is a good route to go now. And we are poised and are ready to submit that amendment. Um, also, we talked about what would happen, um, in 2021 with starting some of this decommissioning. My next slide will show that. So, um, you know, 39,000 for heirs to start, you know, going out to bids, uh, managing some of these things and doing some of these small tasks. And I want to note here again, decommission, these aren't new costs. This is all part of our 1.9 to 2.1 million dollar overall decommissioning cost. They're just moved up in the process. That's all. So those construction activities I was talking about in 2021 stemming from the potential heirs agreement, uh, would be permit applications for sediment management and license amendment requests. Construction access route and possibly build a road. I'm going to show you a slide next where that road might go down to the tail race. Sediment management in the tail race. That's all going to be negotiable with our stakeholders and the DNR. Turbine removal, trash rack cleaning, and then minor repairs. Turbine removal, trash rack cleaning, and then minor repairs on that west wing wall, which would include the sandbagging and things like that. Pretty low cost on that wing wall repair. So I said, how are we going to get, well, you must be thinking, how the heck are we going to get trucks and heavy vehicles down to that dam? Working with Peter Haug from heirs, we kind of came up with this route. We think this is the best route in order to get track, uh, equipment down there. This is the wastewater treatment plant right in the middle of the picture. There is kind of a disposal site, an old quarry where we would dump sediment. Uh, we, if we were to pull it out of that area down there. But yeah, build this road and kind of a causeway right on down to the dam. And then build a ramp road down the backside of the dam. So we're able to get trucks below the dam. So that is kind of the rough route. We're talking about how to get down there. And that road won't be temporary. It will be used all through this project as we manage sediment. And then there may be some future use as we saw in some of the planning sessions that went on before we even started this process. Maybe it's good to be a bike route or a path or something like that. So this wouldn't be a temporary situation. It would feel temporary, look temporary, but there might be some future uses of it as well. Takeaways I want you to take away tonight. We're down to our last slide. Takeaways tonight, we were within our budget on relicensing. It's a lot of money, but we're still within our budget. We're starting decommissioning activities early, but the dam still won't come out until twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six. Now, there's a caveat there though I want to mention tonight, or if funding shows up early. I'm sure this policymaker group, our city council, utility advisory board would love to have a discussion of being a little more aggressive with our timing if money arrives to take out Powell Falls earlier. Removing Powell Falls from our original FERC license, DNR will be the governing agency. I had mentioned that. Want you to note to know that's going to be happening. Activity in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one that may include turbine removal, trash rack cleaning, minor wing wall repair, that road build I just showed you, some sediment removal and other minor activities. Again, these are planned activities, just moved up. And again, the tether takeaway, the hydros will produce about six hundred thousand in avoided costs in those five years of the relicensing, the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three. So there's the presentation. Again, hopefully, like I said, hopefully you think that was like a, a trip to the, a trip to the gym and you feel glad that you went now. On the, down the on the Kevin presentation. Counsel, are there any questions? I'm going to put my screen back over here.
Kevin? This is my second to last council meeting, so I really won't have a lot of skin in the game going forward on this matter. But I think when I originally voted on overall removal or plan of the hydros based on community input and obviously all the studies and input that staff has put in and FERC and all the other stakeholders. I, I would say that I think you guys have done a great job of really kind of laying it out to the council in, in terms that we're going to understand and then also being there to answer our questions long-term. I think you hit the nail on the head based on what I've said in that original vote on the bigger plan of removing the dams at the end of their useful life. And I think definitely Powell Falls is at the end of its useful life. So I would hope future councils would carry on that same sediment of if the funding comes forward, that we restore that portion of the, the river. But keeping that upper dam and hydro moving until the end of its useful life.
Thank you, Councilman Donnie. Appreciate it.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Morset.
Kevin, I apologize. We had, we had a pretty spirited conversation at the UAB meeting. And I overlooked something that I've got a question on now. I'm a little embarrassed I didn't bring it up. Why are we repairing that wing wall if we have no intention of ever refilling?
Because FERC will, FERC has already indicated that you want us to do that. So in the repair there, and I, I was talking to the dam safety inspector, a rate, Scott O'Rado with FERC. And he's going to request that we at least sandbag that wing wall. So it's not going to be any extensive concrete repair. But it'll probably mostly be sandbagging on that wing wall, Scott, just in case, you know, there are lake fills and whatnot. So the repair there will be a repair, but it'll be a minor type repair.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Bierstad.
Kevin, how do you think FERC is going to respond to the, react to the proposed amendment? I mean, is this, is that going to be, is that going to be an issue?
Positively, we have had preliminary conversations with FERC and they know this is coming. And we've had, I think, at least four and possibly, I think, just four of your agencies involved in some of these calls. And they are supportive of the direction we're moving with that. Then there's this, there's a, so it's going to take them ten months to fourteen months to, to do that amendment is what they told us initially. But we want to do some of this work relatively quickly, including removing the turbine, cleaning the trash rack and some of this minor sandbagging prior to getting that from FERC. And they said they would work with us and allowing us to do those things. So council member Bierstad, just want to let you know that there are no surprises with any of these agencies. We have communications often and talk openly about our concerns. Then we try to navigate through them before we get to situations like this. But FERC knows this is coming. They're supportive of what we're doing and they're going to help us through this process.
Sounds good.
Okay. Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Mayor? Yep, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Simpson.
Just, just caveat, Mr. Bierstad, or council member Bierstad is when we say FERC, we mean FERC staff. And FERC staff is always quick to point out that they are not speaking on behalf of the commission and, but that, you know, they're giving us a high probability. So they're very careful about speaking on behalf of FERC. They don't, they don't get the liberty that, that Kevin and I do on your behalf. So there, we, we believe that this is the right path and every, all the staff from both the DNR and FERC are kind of saying, yep, this is the way to go. Keeping in mind that two years ago, they didn't believe it was the right way to go when we asked to go that direction. So that, the flood, I guess, has given us an opportunity to have them reconsider their previous advice to us. So it's, it's not a done deal till it's a done deal.
Okay. Who's next? Yep, go ahead, Mr. Gagne.
I will just notice that Judy Babcock posted in the comments, the Kenny CC and other stakeholder groups support this approach, quote unquote.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you. First, I, I thought to note that it appears that repairs to the dam would not be cost effective, excuse me, to the, to the Powell Dam would not be cost effective. I've heard from some people concerned about that, that we're losing money. And from the numbers that, that Kevin has presented and from other stuff, we're not. This is the most energy efficient way of dealing with that, that issue that we have with the dam. And then I have a question for Kevin. Do we have any plans for the turbine once it's removed? I think that that might be a interesting historical piece to keep and display maybe in Glen Park or somewhere else of what was there. Thank you.
Sure. I know Peter Haug, our engineer from Ayers is on tonight. Him and I have discussed how to get that turbine out. And Ben, council member Plunkett, I don't, I, I don't believe that comes out in one piece. I think it's, comes out in pieces and maybe small pieces to get it out of the hole. So, um, yeah, Peter, Peter Haug, I don't know if you could just answer that, but from our conversations, I'm repeating what our engineer has said and how we talked about getting that out. And Peter, I believe that that doesn't come out in one piece. It would come out in rather small pieces if I'm correct.
That's true. For the first phase, we are going to probably pull it up and leave it in the, inside the dam, not take it completely out. Just pull it up out of the hole. So it's not blocking the flow opening. And then when the contractor comes in in three years or so to remove the rest of the dam, he would probably rip off the whole roof to take out the turbine.
Would there be any saving of that turbine?
I think you could get it out one piece. It's, it's probably four feet in diameter. It's not super huge. It's just heavy.
There's the historic piece. A good, good call, council member Plunkett.
Anybody else have something on this one?
These to have. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Watson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I want to, I really want to thank Kevin and city staff and, and TRC and the other consultants that we've worked with on helping us navigate through a really complex situation and bringing and listening to everyone along the way and bringing everyone together to get to this decision. And like Mr. Gagne said, you know, for, for, for all of us who were at that vote and all the planning and, and discussions that went on ahead of that. You know, this is really a, an important vote we're making tonight. And I think that a lot of times we give direction to staff and say, you know, we want to go, we want to head over here. We want to, you know, remove this dam eventually. We want it to function until it's not cost effective anymore. But, you know, in sitting in or listening in on these UAV meetings and many of the presentations from the engineers and so forth, and there's a lot more of that to come. Actually doing what we asked them to do, what we asked them to do is really tough. And it's not just engineering. It's, it's a lot of, it, it's, it's being in the middle of a lot of conversation between people that have different interests and different understandings. And so I just want to say thanks because I, I think that's a hard position to be in sometimes. And, and I think our city staff have really done a great job navigating a, a hard road up to now and, and will continue. I have a lot of faith in, in them taking us across to the next conclusion of this chapter. So thank you, and I'm, I'm very supportive of this.
No?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yep, go ahead, Mr. Knowan.
So I was at this, it was a very long morning where they had a report for all the studies. I recognize council member Plunkett. I know you were there too. We have the ability to listen and see those reports and the studies. And it was really good to hear what they were finding and sharing that information. Kevin, is there a place for just members of our community and everyone where they can just look at those study reports?
Yes, if you go to rfmu.org, I believe we have a repository for everything hydro on there. So we have a lot of historical things and all the way up through that meeting and the studies as well. So if you, if you want to start and go to the city's website, start there and get to rfmu.org or maybe do a search for hydroelectric. It's, we have a repository for all of that history, including the studies.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay. So Christie, we have a first and a second on the resolution adopting the action items, timing and financial scope for phase one of the Powell Falls Dam decommissioning and FERC license amendment.
I have a first by Alder Person Morset, a second by Watson. We'll start the vote with Mr. Bierstad.
Aye.
Donnie.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Morset.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. So for, before we go to resolution nine and ten, we're going to have the economic development manager, Carrie Schreiner, is going to give us a little presentation that'll cover both of those resolutions. So Carrie, if you want to do that now?
Good. Let me share my screen. All right. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, good evening, mayor and council. Tonight I will be presenting information on tax increment district seventeen and the Tattersall Distilling Project, which like the mayor mentioned, is number nine and ten on your agenda. There we go. So first I'm going to provide a quick refresher. So I will briefly, briefly cover the basics of tax increment financing or TIF. So TIF allows cities to capture incremental property tax revenue from growth in a defined area and use that revenue to benefit that area. Since nineteen seventy-six, tax increment financing has been the most powerful tool and widely used economic development tool in Wisconsin. So the graph that you see before you shows how tax, tax increment financing works. You have the current base value of the property, which is frozen at the time that the tid is created. The adjacent taxing jurisdictions, the county, the schools and the tech college, continue to receive taxes on that base value. Through the years, the city captures the value increment, and that is the money that is used to carry out projects within half a mile of the tid, which are included in the tid plan. Once the tid ends, the increased tax revenue is shared with all of the taxing jurisdictions and they all start receiving the full property value amount. The tid you are reviewing today is a blight elimination district and can be open for twenty-seven years. So the goal of tax increment district number seventeen is to promote redevelopment and fill a large vacant building at the entrance to our city. Over the past few years, staff has reached out to over twelve retail companies for this site, the former Shopko site, which you see here, listed here. With retail, with the retail sector shrinking and the large retail base in Hudson, only eight miles away, they did not have interest in locating in River Falls at this time. Tattersall Distilling has decided that the property and building meet their needs and they are moving forward to purchase the property. I'll provide more information on Tattersall Distilling in a few minutes. Proposed tax increment district seventeen is a blight district comprising eleven point seven seven acres, including the former Shopko site and the four plus acres adjacent to the north, which is currently for sale. In staff's view, this boundary is appropriate and reasonable. In addition to the former Shopko site, it is anticipated that the parcel to the north will redevelop in the future. Both parcels are zone B three highway commercial and future land use is community commercial, which provides sites for larger commercial development along highways. From this perspective, the proposed project plan is consistent with city plans and policies. So as the plan is prepared, staff looks at the infrastructure projects within one half mile of the district that are necessary to the project and will enhance the area around the district. Future projects in this tid are projected to occur throughout the district's life in total a little more than two point three million dollars. Projects will be approved individually by the city after approval of the tid and include some of the projects you see here. So utility and public infrastructure, development incentives, property acquisition, trail creation and maintenance, stormwater maintenance, bridge and street maintenance, sidewalk infill, kidney corridor projects and money for the city's revolving loan fund. After the proposed project list is compiled, Ellers turns to ensuring that the district will cash flow. As this analysis is completed, the city uses conservative financial projections. For example, the tax rate is held steady throughout the twenty-seven year projection rather than increasing it throughout the term, which will most typically happen. Just over seven million dollars in added value is being projected in this tid for the Tattersall Distilling Project. And then an additional three million in year twenty twenty-six for future development on the site, the north. The base value of the tid is just over two point four million dollars and, and projected future investment is over five point six million over the twenty-seven year life of the tid. The Joint Review Board has had their first meeting on March 2nd, as did the Plan Commission, where they approved the resolution to create Tax Increment District Seventeen. If the City Council approves tonight's resolution, the plan will be forwarded to the JRB for their final consideration on April 7th. So now I will move on and talk about Tattersall Distilling, which is a well-established Midwest distiller and bottling company with a strong brand recognition. They currently distill gin, whiskey, vodka, bourbon and more, and altogether they have over 30 all-natural spirits and liquors that they produce and ship across the country. Tattersall has gained national recognition with top honors at the San Francisco World Spirits Competition, American Craft Spirits Association Awards, American Distilling Institute Awards. They were named on the INC 5000 list of fastest-growing private companies in America for the past two consecutive years and more. Tattersall Distilling will open their destination distillery and production facility in the former Shopko site and they will be renovating the approximately 76,000 square foot existing building. The multi-use building will include space for a distillery where the majority of Tattersall's product will be produced and shipped, an expanded barrel storage area where events, tours and tastings will take place. In the retail store, guests will be able to purchase spirits, novelties, snacks and beverages. There will be a tasting bar and guests will be able to participate in guided tours and interactive classes. An event center that includes a boardroom, grand ballroom that can accommodate up to 420 guests and a bridal and groom suite. The amphitheater will be ideal for outdoor wedding ceremonies and other events and space for a full-service restaurant and cocktail bar, including an outdoor patio with access to indoor/outdoor bar and a variety of seating options, including fire pits and lawn games. This project will have a large-scale regional impact and is expected to attract over 160,000 guests annually. This will also generate additional commercial development and job creation in the city. A few key management positions will move over from the Minneapolis Cocktail Bar, but Tattersall will be looking to hire more than 100 local employees. So here are just a few exterior concepts that Tattersall has provided on what it will look like after their renovation is complete. And Tattersall has submitted development plans, which are currently under staff review. They plan to start construction when the plans are approved, hopefully within the next few months, and plan to be open this fall. Tattersall is focusing on sustainability in their new facility. The solar panels on the building are expected to produce a yearly average of 472,000 kilowatt hours of electricity. The water reclamation system will recycle production water, reducing their overall water usage. Tattersall will continue to work with an upcycled ingredient company as the first distillery in the country to commercially upcycle spent grain for human consumption. Surplus grain will also go to a local cattle and bison farm. They will continue to source their grain and ingredients from local small farms. And finally, Tattersall will install a new mill, allowing them to mill all the grain on-site. So now I'll provide an overview of the proposed developers agreement that was provided in the council packet. Through the TID, the city will provide Tattersall a total of 1.36 million in incentives, with 750,000 being provided once they receive their certificate of occupancy. The additional roughly 610,000 will be provided in the traditional pay-as-you-go tax increment financing. The stormwater pond for the site is located on the property to the north, but is a shared pond between the two sites. The developer will be contributing funds to upgrade the pond because there has been issues with this in the past and the city will complete those upgrades and own the pond into perpetuity. As stated previously, Tax Increment District Seventeen is a blighted TID with a maximum life of 27 years. The 15-year guarantee value is 9.25 million and the minimum annual increment is almost $155,000 a year. The city will receive over 2.3 million in tax increment. Staff recommends approval of the resolution creating Tax Increment District Number Seventeen and the resolution approving the developers agreement between the City of River Falls and River Falls Holdings LLC. Also, John Kreidler is on the call, owner of Tattersall Distilling, in case the council has any questions for him. And with that, Mayor, I'll take down the screen and turn it back to you.
Thanks, Kerry. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to number nine, which is Resolution Creating Tax Increment District Number Seventeen, Approving Its Project Plan and Establishing Its Boundaries.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the resolution creating Tax Incremental District Number Seventeen, its project plan and establishing its boundaries.
Okay, we're first and a second. Questions on this? Comments? Go ahead, Mr. Doning.
So, Mr. Mayor, I noticed on page 115 of the packet, it reads city staff reached out to over 12 retail companies for the redevelopment of the site with the retail sector shrinking and retail base in Hudson within eight miles. I'm curious which 12 retail companies for this redevelopment of the site were reached out to by city staff before we got to Tattersall?
Kerry had it in that presentation she just gave us. Kerry, do you have those written down? You can read them off again?
Yes, I can. So staff reached out to Menards, Blaine's Fleet and Farm, or Farm and Fleet, sorry, Runnings, Walmart, Tysons, L&amp;M Fleet Supply, Ivy, Lowe's, Fleet Farm, Target, Tractor Supply Company, Coles and Shields.
Thank you, Kerry. And the reason I'm asking, it's really important for our residents and friends and family to understand this, is we've looked into all sorts of different groups to be in this lot. And I think we're really fortunate to be in a position like this. But the reality was, all those different companies that I've been hearing about, people asking about, they were approached and they told us no. And that's part of, I believe, why we're coming to this decision tonight. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Kerry.
Okay, who's next? Mr. Plunkett?
Mr. Mayor, this development sounds like they're talking about the potential of 600,000 customer visits annually here. And--
No, it's 100, we're talking about 160,000.
160,000, my error there, yeah, sorry. What, how is that going to impact our current traffic flow map? And are there any concerns that staff has that we should be aware about in the future that will need to be addressed? The 3565 intersection or other things in that area? Thank you.
Okay, Kerry, I don't know if you want to answer this. I'm not sure if Crystal's on. I know we had talked about this at the Planning Commission and they have done studies and they assured us it wouldn't be a problem because for most things through there, they'll be pushing them out towards you, the new intersection of you over the highway there. I'm not sure if Scott, if you have more on this?
Yeah, I think, Mayor, to the extent we can, I'm happy, we've got lots of staff available, but to the extent I can, I'll try to answer and if that, if you need a more, a different, a more complete answer or something with more detail that I can answer, then we'll try to pull another staff. But, and I think John, Ms. Peterson's available to get in. But essentially, Shopko is a pretty tremendous traffic impact. So if you look at the impact of what traffic was for average daily trips and impacts on those various intersections and that, and then you look at kind of from a 30,000-foot view, the radio road interchange being added and the connection from Paulson all the way out to radio road. Right now, we don't even think, we wouldn't even recommend doing a separate study because we think that this use of that, that traffic is not going to be more substantial than Shopko. But certainly, we will be prepared if there are issues identified as we go through the project sighting. And frankly, after the project is up and running, let's say they're more successful than they even thought they would be, we'll certainly be looking at that, those impacts as we go forward, as we do with all of our commercial. But the general, I guess, staff recommendation is that, given what was there and operating and had peaks, so some people have said, well, yeah, but you know, you're going to have events now and other things. Well, Shopko had sales and Christmas and, you know, all kinds of things and, or Black Friday and other things. And we did just fine with the traffic. So we're not guaranteeing there won't be any traffic issues ever. But it really, just from on-paper analysis, it doesn't look like something that's worth a whole lot of study at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead. Who's ever next? Who was? Who's ever, who's-- Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so do we know, I got two questions. Do we know about the traffic flow numbers that Shopko had compared to about 160,000 that they're estimating to have a year in their business?
I don't think we have an estimate of the customer traffic related to Shopko specifically. So we would know more like what a box store, you know, 70,000 square foot retail store would do. I don't know that we have Shopko's average daily trips per se. We probably have some data on Paulson Road potentially from city staff. Shopko, this Shopko store was, for many years, the largest dollar per square foot operating store in Shopko's fleet. So as far as Shopko's go, this was as busy as they get.
Yeah, I think I share the sentiment of a lot of people in our community. It'd be nice to have a retail location, and of course, we can say that over and over. But it begs my second question, just, you know, for the clarity of folks that are watching here. I mean, we got a pretty decent audience tonight online, might and maybe future watching of this. Who decides if a business wants to come to the community? Is it the city or that business? And how does that usually play out? I mean, give us the 10,000-foot view, if you could, explanation of how that kind of starts and the process. And is it the city necessarily opening these businesses? Or is it a stakeholder or business owner coming forward and wanting to do that? How's it look?
Turning flashlight on.
That's, that's an interesting, let me think about that question and try to see if I can rephrase it in a way that I can carefully answer for you. I think there is some proactive efforts on the part of the community to create an environment that's attractive to businesses. But ultimately, we mostly are taking calls, not making calls, if that's a good way to answer that question. So in the case of Shopko and in the case of a few scenarios in the past, I'm trying to think of specific one for industrial. So when Neela had some space available in their building and we had done a BRE, a retention visit with them, they had said, well, one of the things you can do for us is see if there's anybody out there that could use this amount of space in our building. In that case, we make some calls. But typically, we're just taking calls on interested properties. We're populating websites and things saying, here's what's available. We're trying to get the attention of developers in a more general way. Specifically for Shopko, staff reached out. So it's not a, what's typical. Shopko wasn't typical. Shopko was a going concern. We were doing business retention with them. They were, the store managers were telling us how good they were having it, how things were going. And then the company failed, so they went under. And we thought, that's a problem and the community would like to have a retail tenant there, so let's contact some. We took a couple of calls, but most of them were made calls or contacts. I'll clarify too, on that list of 13, I did not, there wasn't two-way communication with the city administrator in each of those. There was different members of staff and there was two-way communication on some of those clients. So, you know, Target in particular, we have reasonable access to decision-makers within Target, given their location and the fact that some of their decision-makers live in this area. And they very plainly and politely said, that's not going to happen there. It's just not a location that is in the plans for Target. They've reduced the number of new store openings. They've really got a pretty narrow and limited view of where they're going. And we heard some of the same, I heard some of the same when I was communicating directly with those on this site. So the answers were usually just taking calls. In the case of Shopko, we made some calls and reached out through LinkedIn and our email and all kinds of things, opportunities we had, talked to commercial real estate brokers and others. But typically, it's the businesses themselves that are deciding that this is a good location. And we give them a tour and talk to them and provide them as much information as we can to help them understand if this is a good fit for them. Does that answer the question?
Think that hit it pretty good. Thank you.
Okay, so before we get too far afield, let's get back to, we want to create the TID district. Go ahead, Diane.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, you took the words out of my mouth. We've got the TID district in front of us and we should vote.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we, as we look at a TID district, I think it's important to consider how this will impact other existing businesses and the residents in the area. Do we have any projections on potentially people that are coming here as a destination for this? Business to patronize other places in the area? Or is this something that's going to potentially take away customers from existing areas to this business financed by tax dollars in a way? Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Plunkett, we didn't do a study of specific impacts or any multipliers related to the business. The tax incremental finance creation is based primarily on the impact of that business. You know, certainly there is the possibility for both of the scenarios in which you talked about. So, but we, I, as staff, we can't, we didn't study nor can we identify what the impact would be. If it's net negative to certain industries in town and net positive to others, certainly if it becomes a destination location, then our staff, staff advice to you would be, it would be a net positive. If the business already exists in town, you know, for this type of events and other things, then there could be an impact to existing event businesses. But we didn't do a study to identify that. And that is a possibility to hire out that kind of study. I am not always convinced that those studies are hugely scientific in their estimates. Unlike the, you know, some of our housing assessment, I feel like that is the kind of study that routinely can be relied on as coming true, the predictions. A lot of times, these studies for economic development projects, you know, they're largely dependent on the assumptions the scientist makes about the event. So I'm sorry, we can't give you a better answer.
Mr. Mayor? You're muted.
Gagne?
Because this is a creation of a TID district in relation to specifically a business coming to our community and the redevelopment of this neighborhood. If you go out to Tattersall Distilling's Facebook page, you can see a post that they identified that they're coming to our community. And there are hundreds of people from our community and not from our community that are quote-unquote jazz-- that are um, quote unquote, jazzed, thrilled, excited um, to come to our community and visit this entity um, as well as stay in hotels and other shops. And um, I think that's been very well identified in that one post alone. Um, that this will bring a lot of people to our community um, for tourism. But then also um, people in our own community that are going to be um, patronizing this business um, as well as other businesses as as they are currently do. So I'd recommend that council have Facebook, go out and check that out. I think it's uh, quite identifying.
Okay, is there anything else on the TID? Yep, go ahead, Mr. Downing.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, from my understanding, um, the part of this TID is to clean up this blight, the blight in it. And within that TID, also there's a contract on what occurs if it's not fulfilled by the group that comes into a contract with the city. Now, from my understanding, there's different parts of that. I'm not going to go into all of it. But if anything were to happen and they were to move away for any given reason, it would go to whatever partner that they would be going with. That contract would still stay in effect. That's my question for Mr. Simpson. That's correct, right?
That's correct. And and Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Parliamentarian Odine, I you do do give me a little leash on this because I mean, these two items are are related. I I certainly will save comment if you want me to do for the development agreement, but I understand that the project is kind of related to the TID. But the in the developer's agreement, which is your next item, there is provisions that that require the obligations to to live beyond the current developer, if there's somebody new that acquires the project.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else on TID? Nope, Christie, we have first and the second. On resolution uh, creating tax increment district number seventeen, approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries.
First by Odine, a second by Downing. We'll start the vote with all the persons, Plunkett.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Kanye.
Aye.
Morsette.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Beirstead.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a resolution approving the development agreement between the City of River Falls and River Falls Holdings LLC. And I'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the resolution. Uh, approving the development agreement between the City of River Falls and River Falls Holdings LLC.
Second.
Okay, we have first and second uh, discussion.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I just remind you that the the developer, the project is available. If you, that's up to the council. If you'd like to invite him in, he might, he might have a few words. Um, if the council chooses.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Mr. Downing.
I would like to just hear a timeline from the gentleman.
Hi, uh, this is John Kreidler. I'm uh, one of the owners and the founder of Tattersall. Uh, Mr. Mayor, appreciate your time, council, uh, council members and Administrator Simpson. Um, I, first off, we're unbelievably excited for this project and uh, to immerse ourselves into your community. Yeah, but in in regards to timing, um, the plan is to close on the property next month. Uh, construction will start essentially as soon as we possibly can. We have an agreement with the current owner to get into the property uh, prior to close, actually, uh, so that we can start uh, taking some of the items inside the building out uh, so that we can speed up the timeline, essentially. Our plan is to have production uh, shifted and up and running uh, sometime in the summer, hopefully late July, early August. And then have more of the consumer facing part of the business up and running in September or October. Um, we've already started uh, quite a few conversations with other businesses in the community uh, about hosting events and uh, bringing fundraisers in uh, to the space if we can get it up and running in September. But we're extremely excited about uh, the the potential.
All right. Well, thank you and uh, welcome to the community. And I wanted to thank you for your dedication to sustainable energy. We appreciate that. Thank you.
It was a big draw uh, for us to come to River Falls and uh, the the city's focus on that. So it's uh, the the two two align very well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kreidler. Anybody else have anything?
Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Kreidler to just give a quick overview of the relationship between Morrissey uh, as a hospitality and uh, and and how he sees that working in his new facility.
Morrissey Hospitality has been consulting on kind of the front of the house aspects of the business. Um, and they're going to help us run the the restaurant and the events. Um, our expertise is in i- is in producing spirits, uh, distilling spirits. And Morrissey has a a a pretty unbelievable track record with with events and running hospital or uh, hospitality centers and restaurants. And so we're bringing their expertise in to help us on that side of the business to make sure that it's it's really is a a first class operation.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
So John, a quick question for you. What amount of business are you looking to do um, through a restaurant um, in this facility? Um, compared to the distillery or the event center or any of that? And is this a restaurant going to be open to the general public? Um, and do you foresee um, you know, a big portion of that being restaurant business?
Yeah, I mean, from the initial conversations we we had with with Scott and Carrie uh, and Amy, you know, the, a couple of the things that they were really keyed on uh, were the restaurant, the event center. Um, as we spoke about those as, you know, really an amenity to the community. And so the restaurant will be open to the public. Uh, the plan is uh, ideally, it'll be open seven days a week. Um, and we'll we'll um, have that open to the public. The event center then as well will be open to the public um, for for renting out. We're hoping to bring in a lot of business um, uh, throughout western Wisconsin and eastern Minnesota to to River Falls for this. And you know, it's since we made this news public, um, my phone has kind of been ringing off the hook and meeting different people in the community. And finally, it's been fun because there's, there's a lot of different businesses we wanted to connect with. Um, you know, if it's a mountain biking uh, groups, we've talked to plenty of those, the hotels, the different restaurants. Um, that we really are excited about immersing ourselves and bringing a lot of different businesses in. Uh, I think one of the questions was, are we going to be adding to the community or are we going to be taking away? I think if you look at what we've done in Minneapolis, we do a lot of events and we do a lot of events where we bring other people in. We have a holiday market every year. Obviously, we didn't have it last year, but the holiday market um, will have up to five thousand people come through one space in one day. And we bring in, I think, last time we did it in twenty nineteen, we had eighty vendors, all local artisans selling their goods. We bring them in. It's a way for the community to come in. It's to tie in with the community and we we hope to do a lot of that. Uh, we already have topics with Habitat for Humanity about doing a big event in September. Um, and so it's, you know, it it's just the start. We're we're very excited.
Glad to hear that you're, you have that community mindset and that's what you're um, kind of building this based on. And I'm, you know, Facebook and social media aside, I mean, i- it's a big deal, right? I mean, and that's your, that's kind of the face of most businesses and organizations these days. And I look at like the likes and posts and all that kind of stuff. And you average about twenty to forty likes. But this one specifically, based on your announcement, is one point seven um, thousand, um, one thousand seven hundred likes or loves um, across that. I mean, it's amazing how many people, even from our own community, have come out and said, welcome to the community and just really welcomed you. Um, I haven't seen any really negative feedback outside of, we don't need another bar. Um, which I'm glad to see you're not just another bar. I mean, you have way more to offer our community than just uh, another bar. And I'm um, based on everything I've seen, I'm in favor of this. And I I think you're going to bring a lot of uh, great events and bringing our community together. So in my mind, welcome.
Thank you. And you know, I just touching on that, uh, you know, some of the comments, uh, if people are concerned, we are just another bar. That's, that's not the case in the restaurant. We, yes, we serve alcohol. Uh, and we will serve beer from other people in the community and around the state. Uh, but we'll also have uh, great events that don't involve alcohol uh, and have a great restaurant and a great place for people to come together. So uh, we're hoping it's a, it's a very open space for everybody.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any more questions about the developer's agreement? Christie, we have first and second on res uh, on number ten, the resolution approving the developer's agreement between the City of River Falls and the River Falls Holdings LLC.
First by Alderperson Morsette, a second by Kanye. We'll start the vote with Ms. Odine.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Morsette.
Aye.
Kanye.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Beirstead.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, next we'll go on to uh, our, the Assistant City Administrator, Brant Johnson's going to give us a little presentation on the Rescue Plan Act summary. And this is just a little summary. The, I know they have, staff's got a lot more to figure out. So Brant, if you're all set to go.
I'm bringing him in right now and making him a presenter. Probably.
Thanks, John.
Right, yeah. Three, two, one. Should be good to go, sir.
Yeah. So good evening, Mayor and council members. So we'll see if I can get this on correctly. So and everyone can see it, right? Oh, what the? Oh, I was too fast for it.
I blinked.
All right.
All that youthful enthusiasm.
All right, so there we go. So everyone can see it now properly. Yep. Okay. Move that up. Hold on. I think I might have it wrong. Do I have it right?
Ooh, it seemed good there for a second. There you go.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight, we're going to provide an update on the um, American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA. Um, and as Kevin said, this is kind of a a new adventure that we're kind of finding ourselves in with um, this potential amount of money that we'll be seeing from the federal government. Um, so we'll talk about uh, what the American Rescue Pl- Plan Act is, its impact on Wisconsin, Pierce, St. Croix County, and the City of River Falls, and possible use of the funds. Um, so about two weeks ago, President Biden signed uh, into law the one point nine trillion COVID Relief Act. And within that bill, there are a number of provisions that will impact localities, uh, such as the three hundred and fifty billion dollar uh, aid for state and local governments. Um, but first, we want to kind of, before we dive into that portion, there are other notable aspects of the grand one point nine trillion dollar bill um, that could impact the City of River Falls. So this could include uh, transport, transportation money, uh, specifically money for the city's taxi service. Um, which, like last year during the first uh, relief act, the the city's uh, taxi service did receive some money during that and will probably anticipate receiving some money again in a similar fashion. And then again, um, with this too, we're seeing that RFMU might receive some assistance with um, regarding providing funding for um, our uh, low income water and uh, energy customers. And then the River Falls Housing Authority could potentially receive funding from uh, the federal government too as well, where it could provide emergency uh, rental assistance to tenants. And the River Falls Public Library could also receive some money during this, during this too. Um, so, you know, now that we've gotten to the main course, um, what does the three hundred and fifty billion dollars include? Um, so this includes a hundred and ninety five billion for states and and District of Columbia, a hundred and thirty billion for localities such as ourselves, ten billion for uh, coronavirus capital projects fund uh, and twenty six billion dollars for uh, tribal territories and whatnot. So to break it down further, we know the following for the states and localities. Uh, states will be giving that, given at minimum one point two five billion dollars each. So Wisconsin is at least going to get that much there. And then a hundred and sixty nine billion will be distributed uh, to each state based on unemployed workers. And uh, an interesting provision that's included in this, that was uh, from the Senate version of it, is a coronavirus capital projects fund. So this is the ten billion dollar uh, mark there. So this will be used for uh, capital projects relating to state. So uh, to address public health emergencies. So what that is specifically is still kind of being determined um, by uh, the feds and the state on what that could be. Um, localities in particular in our size are going to receive um, about nineteen and a half billion dollars. And counties will receive about sixty five billion. Um, so the funds will be distributed in two tranches. Uh, so the first tranche will go out in about sixty days from the passage of the law, which was in March eleventh. And the second tranche of the money will go out uh, a year from that first uh, batch. Um, and so night, non entitlement cities, which River Falls is, um, will will receive a pass through from the state within thirty days of the state receiving the funds. And funds will need to be used by the end of twenty twenty four. So how much are we estimated to receive? So with State of Wisconsin for just their portion, so they're receiving about five point seven billion dollars overall. But three point two billion of that would just be for the State of Wisconsin. And then the rest directed to counties and to localities such as ourselves. Um, they're also going to get a hundred and ninety million dollars in state capital projects fund. Um, like I said earlier, we'll try and figure out, we're just going to figure out what that will be and what type of projects that will be. Uh, Pierce County is going to get about eight point two million or eight point three million. And then St. Corry County is going to get seventeen point six million. Uh, and so the City of River Falls is anticipated to receive anywhere from about one point six to three million dollars. And so this large range uh, is due to um, it essentially boils down to a community is a overlapping. Uh, the community has an overlapping population with another community. So think of the town of River Falls and the city of River Falls. Um, and how the US Treasury and the State of Wisconsin will determine that final method of calculating funding for those entities and who would be classified as each. So with any allocation of money uh, from the federal state government, there is sure to be some strings attached. And you know, our allocation is no exception. Um, there are essentially four main uh, allowable uses for these funds. Um, so this will respond to the public health emergency with respect to COVID nineteen or its negative economic impacts. Include premium pay for eligible workers performing essential work during the pandemic. So essentially allows the municipality to provide up to thirteen dollars per hour above regular wages. Um, recovering lost revenue due to the public health emergency. And make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. Um, so not listed, but it should be mentioned is that allocated funds cannot be used to fund uh, pensions. A couple of points pertaining to these allowable uses. Uh, so for the reduction in revenue in uh, item number three, the key word here is prior to the emergency. So this means that the base year against which we will measure lost revenue that happened not the most recent full fiscal year, but the most recent full fiscal year prior to the emergency. So I believe that would be anything before two thousand twenty, essentially. So for the fourth point here, the key term here is or. If this were and, then all three might be allowed. Um, but as preliminary, this is preliminary uh, interpreted by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. Um, we only get to make one investment uh, in one of those categories, not all three. So but this is still kind of needed to be det- So, but this is still kind of needed to be determined if that is the actual case or not. And then a sent, then we also need to provide occasional reports to treasury as well. So essentially, we're going to need some more information needed before acting on, you know, the funds that will potentially received. So we'll need to affirm the final rules from, from state and federal agencies on how our allocation can be spent. Because there are some broad spending categories that need more definition and, you know, there's a lot of clarification on what we can and can't do. And we want to figure that out before committing resources and staff time in trying to figure out what projects to do. You know, what will be finalized direct funding? So this is like funding goes to your library or taxi or, or housing for the housing authority. Or an indirect funding. So this is your infrastructure staffing, et cetera, allocation. And the city is, how much will of those fundings will the city and its partners receive? And, you know, what items do you think we would want to? If there are items from the 2021, 2022 legislative priorities list that we should use the funds for, such as Palo Avenue Bridge that was damaged during the flood in June of 2020. So essentially, staff needs to gather more information before charting a course on what we can do with the potential funds. And so I can send this out, this PowerPoint out to you all to after this, but essentially, but we have a breakdown of ARPA here and from two sources. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions I can answer for any of you or me or Scott?
Can you, yeah, thanks.
Can you unshare, Brant?
Yeah, can you unshare, Brant? Sorry. That way I can see if anybody raised their hands. So I, I, I understand you guys got a lot to figure out yet, Brant, before we all start giving you our wish list.
Yes, we do. So it's.
Nope, nope. Good. I appreciate that. So does anybody have anything, questions for Brant or Scott on this? No, Brant, I guess you did such a great job of explaining that. You made it very, very easy for us.
Well, we can, hopefully we can conclude this adventure for tonight pretty soon then, so.
Thanks, Brant. Good job.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, next we'll move on to Ms. Odean with the Comptroller's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Comptroller's Report for February 2021. General fund revenues through the end of February were $3,678,471 or 32% of budgeted revenues. Revenues in February included $2,322,904 in property tax settlement and $424,842 in annual payment for state facilities. Expenditures for the same period were $1,361,681 or 12% of budgeted expenses. So net revenues over expenditures as of February 28th, 2021 were $2,316,790.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Odean. Okay, so next we'll move into closed session per Wisconsin state statutes for the following purposes. Considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any, any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility to wit the city administrator. So I'll need a motion for this.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move into closed session.
Second.
Did you get, did you get that, Christie?
Well, I have a tie between Mr. Morissette and Mr. Watson, so.
Let Mr. Watson have it. He's, one of his last meetings.
Yeah, all right. I've, I've got him.
Okay.
Start the vote with Mr. Kanye.
Hi.
Plunkett.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Morissette.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Odean.
Hi.
Watson.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Christie. We are in closed session. And John, we'll give you a while to get it all figured out.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, Mr. Gerhart is still here. Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to lock, I'm going to stop the stream and recording. Right, we're done recording.
Yep, yep.
Enter that.
And Karen, Karen's around?
Oh, Karen is supposed to be here?
I didn't know if she wanted to be or not. She doesn't have to be.
Oh, well, let me get a hold of her and ask her to come back. That was my faux pas.
Yeah, she was going to be available for questions.
Okay, all right, hold on. Let me stop streaming first.
You're fine, you're fine.